Okay, Miles will talk. Thank you very much. Good evening. Good evening, friends in Phillips Town. Welcome to the October 21st meeting, October 21st, 2021, meeting in the Phillips Town Planning Board occurring virtually via Zoom. We appreciate your flexibility and tolerance for our continued use of digital engagement until such time we all feel much more comfortable, maybe with the boosters coming soon. For those of us especially inflicted with the Johnson Johnson vaccine, we can look forward to a real vaccine coming soon, Wednesday next week at Drug World. Thank God for yours truly. So, all right, with that, may we have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dennis Gagnon. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dennis, perfectly done. Cheryl, call the roll.
Kim Connor.
Yeah.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Wes. Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Thank you, Cheryl. Cheryl, did we receive the September minutes in our packets?
No, I'm just finishing those up because I was out, so you'll have them in next one.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to call you out. I often will miss the thing I should be looking at first. So, thank you very much. And again, our condolences to you, Cheryl. So, we'll start with, is there any correspondence that's not referred to a particular item already in tonight's materials? I guess that's not related to a particular agenda item? Is there any correspondence that's not tied to a particular agenda item?
No, just the referrals from the town.
Okay, great. So, let's start with the referrals. And again, to the public, I know if you haven't done our agenda, you'll see that online, and I did post that to Facebook and the like. So, we have really two local laws that were being asked to comment on this evening. You received them, your packet that Cheryl provided. One is on cannabis, and two are effectively both related to Upland Drive and Ridge Road Development Districts. I'll open it up to the first one, which I think is a little less in our purview, but worthy of any comments the board is asking for. Does anyone have any comments related to the local law related to establishment for onsite consumption? Or in fact, I guess the non-establishment of consumption in Phillips Town of cannabis?
Neil, if I could on that. This local law, technically, I don't believe, needs referral to the planning board. However, the opting out of the cannabis state law will tangentially affect zoning and land development in the town in that there won't be retail sales or onsite consumption facilities. Now, if you think that that's got a negative impact or positive impact, or perhaps you don't have any thought on it whatsoever, that's fine. But that's really the focus of the planning board, not whether, you know, opting out is a good idea or not because you either are for or against legalization of, you know, cannabis. It's really the land use aspects of it.
I think that seems pretty clear. I don't think they're asking us for just a focus group of seven plus on the whole thing. So, are there any reactions to the local law? I don't know if it's worthy besides Steve, I think you summarized it very clearly. We're opting out of having retail sales of cannabis in Phillips Town. Anyone have any comments related to through a planning board perspective?
I have a, I guess I could ask Steve a question. Are there restrictions? I remember when we were looking at the Garrison Cafe, and there were people, they wanted to put in a liquor store or to sell wine. And are there any restrictions on liquor where you can sell liquor in the town?
I believe it's treated as retail sales.
Yeah. Okay. I was just curious. It just seems like, it seems like when we've run up against that, you know, we've had opposition from the public. So, it would seem to me that the public probably would support this opting out.
Other thoughts? Please, Heidi, go ahead.
Well, I would just say, following up on Kim's comment, that it does seem to me, I'm not, I have no comment about opting out of the cannabis law, but I would say I think it's kind of hypocritical and concerning that we have that liquor and is sold along, you know, particularly Route 9 and along the roads here where there's, you know, roadside bars and restaurants that are focused on, not, not so, I, it's not an issue with restaurants, but, you know, for example, the place where people throw hatchets, the newly opened place, I'm not even sure it's, no, it might be in Duchess, but that might be in Beacon, but there's places along, in Phillips Town, along Route 9 where, that are focused on, you know, alcohol consumption and where it's known people will be driving, will be leaving the establishment and driving. I mean, I, that concerns me, but now, we're not going to enact prohibition. But I would just say, you know, it's, I think we should avoid new establishments that are, that, you know, involve substances that impair drivers along in Phillips Town. That's my view, that at least we shouldn't, we should take a hard look at any place that would enable drive, you know, allow drivers to be impaired potentially when we know that it probably is, you know, the rules are already not heavily enforced in terms of, you know, how, you know, driver safety. So, I would just say I'm supportive of this, but I also think we should just recognize that we already have an issue, probably. But anyway, that's my thought.
Okay, Heidi, others? No?
I have a letter to the board then saying the planning board's in favor of it, or the planning board doesn't want to take any position? It doesn't sound like anybody's against it.
I was actually going to say right now that I am actually for it, I supported, I think, I thought Heidi's point was, it's not a bad thing to limit the proliferation of additional things that legalize substances that could cause harm and, you know,
Yes.
It's not, so in that sense, I support it. I don't, if folks, let me just take a straw poll. Anybody support, what are people's sentiments, supportive of this law? Can I have a show of hands, please?
Support of opting out.
Support of opting out.
Yes, the law, the law is a support of opting out of allowing to not to have retail sales in Phillips Town of marijuana or cannabis. Is anyone in favor? Support, one, two, three, four, five? Okay, five. Okay, Dennis is not, Dennis wants his pot. All right, we'll get Dennis.
You can't make jokes like that when he can't, his wifi doesn't.
Dennis, turn off the video. Maybe just do audio.
I got, I don't know, Neil, just let, if I may, just add one thing. This may be outside the purview of the planning.
I'm in favor of free enterprise, so.
So, one no. All right, fair, fair. Go ahead, Neil, finish your point.
Yeah, and I mean, I have, I have talked to several, I mean, this is a group that I hadn't expected to hear from on this, but the seniors, I've been approached by, you know, enough seniors who have it, who have some sort of medical marijuana regimen in as part of what they're, you know, trying to do to deal with things. And they, and they, they've said, well, I can't get to Beacon, or I can't get to Peak Skill, and I need it, whether it's vision or digestion, or whatever they're getting out of this, they're, they are concerned that they can't get to a dispensary. So, that admittedly was not a group that I had pictured as being for this. And anyway, so.
I think I want to just carry Steve's commentary, which is from a perspective of planning.
Right.
I think, I think Heidi, Heidi was construing it narrowly in terms of effect on drivers, which affects the roads, which affects us relatively speaking. So, I hear your point, Neil. I'm not sure, well, I think that's a very important political and/or, not political, but, you know, community-based view, because I think that makes sense. You got me thinking, does Drug World sell medicinal marijuana? I don't know.
But as far as the planning board, I agree with Steve. It's probably outside of what we're trying to do here.
Steve, a thought on that? To Neil's, to Neil Toman's point, do you have a view of that being within or without?
Well, from a land use perspective, I think that's within, if you want to say that it's a use that people may want. I got to tell you, I think that medical marijuana would be legal regardless of whether you opt out or not in terms of sales. So, I just don't see this law as having an impact on that, you know.
It is an accessibility question, right?
Right, right. I understand. They might be able to get medical medicinal marijuana at these places as well. I don't know. So, do you want to not take a position? Do you want me to write a positive letter to the board?
Well, what I'm hearing is, well, let me, I just want to ask, does anyone else have a view that concurs with Neil Toman's? I would say I actually think Neil's point about an exception for medicinal marijuana or medicinal cannabis actually is a really thoughtful insight, and.
All right, I'm pretty sure it's not covered by this law. I think you can have it anyway.
It doesn't mention, it doesn't say recreational or medicinal. It just says cannabis.
Right, statutorily, it doesn't allow us to split that hair. So, I get it. We're in the, we're in the planning board. We're, I get how it wouldn't fit. I just think it's something to think about.
So, I think, Steve, I, the sentiment of the board, I think, and I think it may not be, it may be fair to say that we were a six to one, or five to one, excuse me, with Peter not here this evening, we're five to one in favor of the law. And if you, it's worthwhile to make a minor note or a minority report on the fact that there is some desire to ensure that medicinal marijuana is available. Or I think that's not a bad note to share with our, with our friends.
I will add that to the letter.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Second, our two laws, and I happen to be at Town Hall for the first time in a very, very, very long time for the planning, for the Town Board meeting, when the discussion was happening publicly around the Upland Drive and Ridge Road Development District. There's two, there's two components. One is the law related to effectively what I've described as our, our classic purview of site planning, densities and lot sizes and the like. And the second is related to the private roads themselves and standards. Maybe, Steve, I don't want to put you on the spot. Can you summarize them at all?
Would it be hard if I walked you through them separately?
I'm perfectly fine with that. Is that acceptable to the group?
Sure.
Yeah, all right. I'll start with the local law that creates the two overlay districts, the Upland Drive and, or Development Districts, Upland Drive and Ridge Road Development Districts. These are districts structured around Upland Drive, Cliffside Court, and Ridge Road. And what it does is, upzone in that area, there's two reasons for the upzoning, more than two, but two main ones. That is that the roads in this area are particularly poor, private roads, and development along these roadways is going to have a very bad impact on those roads. The second one is that the land within these areas is environmentally sensitive. There's issues with drainage, depth of soil over bedrock, there's steep slopes, tremendous steep slopes, and you could go on and on. So, the idea is that by upzoning, the town will limit development to a degree which would be deemed at least safe, if not wholly suitable to these lots. And the upzoning consists of the following. If you look at the SEAF narrative description at the end of the EAF, you should have had in your packet, it lists them for you. The density conservation subdivisions is decreased from one acre to two acres, so less density. Lot size is increased from one acre to two acres. The minimum, maximum impervious surface coverage is decreased from 20% to 10%, so you can have less impervious surface on the lots. The maximum footprint in square feet from residential, for resident, non-residential structures, garages, things along those lines, sheds, is decreased from 5,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. So, you're going to have less overall building area, which again plays into impervious surface. And in addition, a requirement in regard to steep terrain and ridge line protection, you know how we have the requirement if you're building on steep slopes, will apply to these properties and disturbance of 30% or greater for purposes of steep slopes. For those, for development in those areas requires an area variance from the zoning board of appeals. So, if you're building on a flat area, you're not going to have a problem. If you're building on a steep slope, then, then you're going to have to go probably if it's a great deal disturbance to the zoning. And those are the proposed changes, the upzoning.
Okay. Comments?
How difficult. What is it, what do you have to do to get an area variance?
An area variance, there's four requirements, I believe, and you have to show that it's not self-created, that the hardship, that you are not having an adverse impact on the neighbors adjoining properties. You're not having an adverse impact on the environment, and I forget what the other requirement for an area variance is, but it's along those lines. You're not going to be having an adverse impact on neighboring properties or the environment, basically.
Isn't, isn't all hardship, isn't all hardship self-created because you want to build?
Well, if you buy property knowing that you have hardship, the zoning applies, for example, then yes, it is self-created. Self-created hardship in regard to an area variance doesn't require denial. It's just one more consideration. It's a balancing test, not a checklist.
Thank you.
I think it sounds like a great idea. First, that's my view. I support it.
Others?
Me too. What Heidi said.
Others, comments? No, I just have a couple of quick ones on the SEAF narrative. So, I keep tripping up, maybe it's my logical brain. I keep tripping up with the maximum density is decreased from one to two. I have a hard time hearing it decreases and increase in numbers. So, can you just, what would be the, what would be the noun you could put after, from one acre to two acres of blank?
Of homes.
Of homes.
So, you get one home for every two acres instead of one home for every one acre.
Ah, got it. That's helpful. That's strange, strange language.
You're not going to see conservation subdivisions up there anyway. I'll tell you right now, I'd be shocked if somebody went, went in. It's just not conducive to it, but you have this provision in the code, and you have to deal with it. And so, to be consistent with upzoning everything else, we upzoned, proposed upzone, the maximum density for conservation subdivisions.
Got it. Secondly, why, why, first of all, who would build a garage of 4,000 or even 5,000 square feet? Have you ever seen a garage that big?
Squirrely provision, but I suppose if somebody went and got a use variance and they were putting in a commercial building, you have this provision in the code right now that says non-residential buildings of up to 5,000 square feet, and it could be collective, you know, you could have multiple buildings are permitted. So, again, consistent with the upzoning, it was like, gee, why leave it at 5,000? It really should be reduced. And you didn't want to just pick a number out of thin air. 4,000 was thought to be a very modest reduction given 5,000 is allowed now.
Probably equally thin air, though, but yes, a modest, thin. I don't have a problem with it. Anyway, so, anyway, so it sounds like we're all in favor, but I don't, I have nothing to add to it other than the clarification. So, happy to give the sentiment, and no one's opposed? Anyone opposed? Okay, so I think the board is unanimous in support of it. And the private road one?
Okay. This is a little more complicated. I'll try to keep it short. I know we have a lot to get to. So, right now, under Town Code 11235, streets have to be constructed to town road specifications, and that's in Chapter 150 of the Town Code. And as the specification incorporates state standards as well, specifications for building a road, except for private roads. Private roads are held to a much lesser standard. What this local law does is it repeals 11235 to say, instead of that private roads are separate, don't have to be built to town standards, that any private road that gives access to 10 or more lots does have to be built to town road standards. Private roads that give access to nine or less lots can continue to use the reduced standard that currently applies to private roads. The second section of this just clarifies that the reduced standard is the standard in 11264 of the Town Code, which is under the ODA standards for roads now. The third section deals with the grandfather clause. There's a grandfather clause in the ODA provisions right now, and it confuses everybody pretty much regularly. And that appears in 11260. What it says is if your road was built in 1960 or before, no matter how bad a road it is, if it doesn't meet town road standards or any other standards, you can still get building permits for it if it only has eight lots on it. If your road was built in 1980 or before, again, regardless of its condition, you can get building permits along it as long as there are no more than four lots on it, right? After that, roads have to meet the minimum town road standards that are currently in place. And what this local law does is get rid of that grandfather clause. So, it's out. So, any references to it in the code are deleted by this local law, and that's what Section 3 of the local law does. It deletes the reference in 112685 to the four-lot exemption. The next section, Section 4 in the local law, says that the planning board can modify ODA road requirements. And the current standard is that the roadway has to be safe and suitable access for emergency vehicles. That what this local law does is repeals that and sets a new standard for granting ODA approvals, which is that the applicant is unable and is able to demonstrate these unable to either as a physical matter or as a practical matter comply with town road standards if it's got more than 10 or more lots having access of it, or the reduced standards if it's a lot with nine or less. So, it's not just can a fire truck or an ambulance get through anymore? Under this, this local law, they'll have to actually show there's a reason that they can't comply with the, with the, with the ODA standard, or either the town road standards or the ODA standards. Section 5 sets a 45-day limit for processing ODA applications. The planning board's supposed to do it within 45 days. On the playboards ever, from my experience, processed an ODA application in 45 days. They're usually married to site plan applications or subdivision. Sometimes they come in by themselves, but usually there's something else involved with them. So, this gets rid of that 45-day limit, which frankly wouldn't serve any purpose except to allow the applicant to bring a lawsuit to compel you to make a decision if, you know. So, it was just kind of a pointless section. Section 8 deletes 11260, which, as I said earlier, is the exemption provision. Section 7, oh, Section 7, it's 112-62 of the ODA provisions. And what it says is that planning board's decision on an ODA road application can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Well, with all respect to the zoning board, they really don't have the expertise that the planning board has in deciding ODA applications. They just don't do them. So, it doesn't make any sense for there to be an appeal from the planning board to the zoning board on ODA applications. The local law gets rid of that provision and says, if you want to challenge the planning board's decision, you bring an Article 78 proceeding in Supreme Court, and the court will hash it out rather than going through two administrative proceedings, and then bring an Article 78 proceeding to challenge the determination. And lastly, 11264, Section 8, sets private road standard subsection, which, you know, says how you got to build your road if it's a, it's the lesser standard. Subsection H refers back to the exemption in regard to the four lots. So, that was eliminated because it was a reference to that. The only other thing I would add is that there is one typo in the local law. It refers to subsection B5 of Code Section 11256 being repealed. That's Section 3 of the local law. It should be subsection A5. There is no B5 in 11256. And that, again, is just a reference to the exemption. So, it's not terribly important, but since we're eliminating it. So, when we write to, when you write to the Town Board, I think that should be referenced so that the text correction can be made before the board acts on it. And that's, that's law.
Any questions?
I have a question. So, Steve, you know how we, whenever we talk about how, how many houses we can have on a road, does this make it, you know, this give us an actual number? Did this change?
Yes, that is, that, that section is the bane of our existence.
Right.
Let me go over it one more time, okay? So, the deal is that if you're on a private road, in order to get a building permit, you have to meet, right now, the lesser town road standards, and it's laid out. It's got to be, you know, 14 feet wide and no more than a certain slope and, you know, clear sight distances and all the other things that are laid out in the code, okay? And if you can't meet those provisions normally, you have to apply to the planning board for an ODA approval. And you take a look at the road, and you say, well, yeah, it doesn't meet standards, but if an emergency vehicle can get through, you know, good enough. And you have some discretion beyond just an emergency vehicle, but that's the basic standard. However, there's this exception, a grandfathering clause in the code. And what it says is, if your road was built in 1960, and you don't have any more than eight homes on it, or eight lots that access off it, you don't have to meet any road standards. You just go in, the building inspector gives you a building permit for that eighth home. After the eighth home, you got a problem. But up to the eighth home, you get your building permit right away. If your road was built in 1980 or before, same thing, only up to four houses. That is the only significance of that eight and four number. And people, for whatever reason, think that, you know, you can't possibly get a building permit beyond the eight or the four. It's not true. It's just this kind of a antiquated clause that says if you have an old road, and it's only got eight houses on it, and you've only built seven, you can get a building permit for the eighth right, right out of the box, no problem. So, the numbers, this, this local law throws that out altogether. It's gone. Just forget about it. The only numbers that matter in this, this law are whether you have nine lots accessed off the road or 10 lots accessed off the road. If you only have nine, then you get to use the lower standard. If you have 10 or more, it could be 10 through 100 on a private road. Doesn't matter how many, 1,000 wouldn't have that many, but I mean, you know, I'm saying, any number. Then you have to meet town road standards, not the lesser standards, the same standards as a town road. Now, if you can't do that for whatever reason, physical reasons, you just, you don't own the land, you know, whatever the problem is, you can come to the planning board and say, all right, look, I can't meet the town road standards in regard to road width or pitch or sight distance, whatever it is, and here's why I can't meet that. And if you find that they can't meet that, but it's still a safe road, depending on how it is they plan on building it, then you can grant them an ODA approval.
Oh, just to follow up for that, so does that mean that, you know, what if, are there lots out there that we've denied in the past because they were the fifth lot or whatever? Can those people come back now?
Okay. If they were the fifth lot, they had to come to you anyway. It had nothing to do with being, if they were the fourth lot, they never would have been to you to begin with. They would get their building permit from the building inspector. If they're the fifth lot on a 1980 road, they come to you, and you decide if the road was built safe and suitable for emergency vehicles. And like I said, you can have other requirements, but that's the basic standard. So, you either would have granted it to them or not. So, for example, you may remember there was one where Andy Marante was chairman still, and the pitch of the road was so steep that the planning board said, look, we can't, I don't even think a fire truck could get up there. We're not going to give you approval. So, if they come back now, the standard's even higher. So, I mean, it would be even more difficult for them to get approved.
Okay, so what I need is a tattoo that says the number of houses is immaterial.
I don't have a tattoo, but maybe, maybe a cheat note or something.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Steve, can I just say something? So, Dennis and I attended a pre-op meeting. First of all, I support this, this law wholeheartedly. But I just wanted to say that Dennis and I attended a pre-op meeting not long ago where the issue came up with the applicant that they would be the ninth house on a road. I get, and I, and I guess it would have fit within this sort of, so I think the law will have changed for that applicant, perhaps, where based on the size of the house, they wouldn't necessarily have had to even come before the planning board. If they, and Dennis, please correct me if I'm wrong about. If they, and Dennis, please correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, but, um, so like there were different issues involved with the applicant at the pre-op meeting. But one of the things, and I guess Ron, I think Ron Gaynor's not on the call today, right? But the, he could, what's that?
Easier.
Oh, he is. Okay. So Ron can also correct me as well. But in any event, I think it made a difference. The fact that the guy was going to be like the ninth house made a difference as to whether he would even have to come before the planning board. So it just might make sense to tell someone like that if the law might be changing that this change may be, you know, either has been made. And again, I support the change, I wholeheartedly. But I just think, you know, to be fair to the applicant, it might make sense to tell them, look, there's been a change and, you know, you would be before the planning board anyway now. If they, if the fact that they didn't already, I don't think they've submitted anything yet because it was pre-op. So, you know, you see what I'm saying? Like?
I do, Heidi, but I, and your point's well taken. There, there should be, you know, notice particularly people might be affected. But he was the ninth house.
That was something like, I think so because.
He was going to have to come to the planning board anyway because only eight.
Well, he, okay, so he must have been the eighth house. So what I said was stupid. He was the eighth, maybe, or something. Anyway, Ron, you know.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to that for just a second. There was question at the pre-op as to just how that section of the land development rates apply. In my subsequent research, it appeared that the, the development of the roadway must have been after 1960, so they would have had the four lot limitation. And, and he would still be encumbered in the application with this board.
Okay. I don't think that came up at the pre-op meeting, but that then.
A research was done subsequent to it.
Okay.
There's a question during the meeting. Right?
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Can I take a straw poll of the board in support of this local law? Favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, Ron, sorry, Steve, you can share that this unanimity of the board is to support the law. Thank you for that. Okay, that was longer than I expected, but useful for our, for our appointing authority, the town board. So thank you for that indulgence colleagues. Okay, on to new business. The Arno Santelissis property, please. Can we allow whomever is their representative or themselves to, to share?
Hi, Jason Snyder with Badian Watson, representing the applicant Santelissis in Arno. This a four acre parcel in the rural residential zoning district. There is an existing, the, 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 the existing houses on Juniper Hill Road, it's two other houses on Juniper Hill Road. This is, there's an existing cottage on the parcel.
Are we losing Jason? People hear Jason? Okay.
Are we having problems?
Either you're, either you're pausing significantly or there's a lot delay in the calls. I just couldn't tell.
Okay. Okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, please, please, Jason.
Yeah. So there's, and, and, and a new house to be constructed? How, how are we doing?
I, I don't know. You, you tell us. Typically, the way we do this is Glenn or someone else says, let me tell you about the project and gives his spiel. Turn it over to Ron. Ron tells us his technical comments, the board asks questions, and then we take our next steps. That's, that's what we usually do.
I mean, as far as the video and, and audio.
I don't know. Not the best, but we'll, we'll make it work. You, you keep going.
Okay. Okay. So this is in the scenic protection overlay district. The scenic protection overlay district in this area runs from Route 9 down to the river because the whole, the whole site is in the scenic protection overlay district. We have some steep slopes on the property. Does, do you see, can you see my screen?
No, no, we can't.
Is my screen up?
We have not, you do not have your screen up, Jason.
Okay.
Does he need permission? Does he need Cheryl to?
No, again, Jason.
Permission is up. He should be able to share.
Yeah, we got it, Jason.
Okay, how are we there? Okay. Okay. So on this actual property with an easement to the other lots, we got a, we got a stream corridor running through the property. We have some steep slopes on the property, which we are avoiding.
Jason, if I can make a suggestion, Jason, if I can make, if I can make a suggestion, Jason, why don't you just take your video off? Because there, every 20 seconds or something, you get a pretty, pretty significant delay and we're losing the thread of what you're saying. So if you could just turn off your video, keep the audio going, well, I think that would be better for you.
Okay.
Spoken like a true IT professional that I am not.
All right, stop.
All right, back to you, Jason.
We'll stop the video here. Okay. Okay, so we have the, we have health department approval on the septic and while we have an existing driveway that, that we're going to use for, for the new house. Said we got a, the, the house is in the scenic protection overlay and we also have a house over 3,000, I'm sorry, 3,000 square feet. The total house footprint is about 4,700 square feet. We have a proposed garage and a, and a proposed pool. I know that we're going to need wetland permit for some of the, the the driveway here and wetland buffer where we are taking out the the, the existing, the existing cesspit and some of the, and some of the lawn that's currently in, reclaimed as wetlands. Other than that, you know, it's a tear down rebuild. Okay, like I said, the, the house that's already cleared. It, it's a, it's already developed. You know, most of the area that we're develop, developing in the limit of disturbance is already, is already open space.
Jason, I'm sorry. It's been a little hard to hear you, but can you, are you, are you still going? Are you?
No, I think that's about it for now. If you want Ron to kind of take over.
Well, let's just say, does your client have anything he wants to say? He doesn't have to say anything, but if he does, I just want to open it to him. Mr. Santelissis, anything you want to say? You don't have to. I'm just offering you if you want to.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. I think nothing right now to say. Jason was spotty in the conversation because of internet, I think. But if there's any questions that I need to address in the process, I could probably help out. Some of the technicalities that I might not know, but the general thinking I, I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Ron, I'll turn to you first for your comments, please.
Sure. The board has a technical memorandum from, from me. Again, this is the first opportunity the board's had to review the development concept. So what you typically do on the first meeting is to classify the project. It obviously qualifies as a minor project pursuant to planning board procedures. You should be accomplishing that at tonight's meeting. Similarly, with respect to SIKR, based on the state regulations, construction or expansion of a single family, two family, or three family residence on an approved lot is deemed a type two action, which, once you make that classification, you've completed your required environmental review. So that likewise could be accomplished tonight. I've identified a few referrals that are necessary based on the project's location, referrals to the county. Given the disturbances within the stream corridor and wetlands, referral to the conservation board would also be appropriate. And as was mentioned, London County Department of Health is involved, but apparently they've already gotten approvals from them for the sanitary design. So those are the prior predominant issues to deal with tonight. And then lastly, you want to consider whether there should be a site inspection to be performed. I would think based on the steep slopes, you know, the potential environmental impacts relative to the stream corridor. There's also an issue with very limited site distance at the project entrance or the roadway entrance to Route 9B that I think the board may be interested in observing. So you might want to consider whether to schedule a site inspection for some future date at tonight's meeting. And then lastly, since it's a minor project, public hearings are discretionary. But again, very often you decide to have those public hearings, but that decision can await until you've made a site inspection, if that's your determination.
Yeah, exactly. All right, Steve, anything to add?
I think that sums it up very well.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions?
I think the only question I have is, you know, I want to understand what the scenic ridgeline restriction is. So when we do our site visit, if we could talk about that and have that sort of explain to us, because this seems like it's right on the scenic ridgeline. And I thought there was a restriction about, you know, like 50 feet out and 50 feet down, like that.
Well, there, there's no, there's no scenic ridgeline associated.
Right. No, what's the hat, what's?
Particular project, it's the scenic protection overlay. The orange, the orange, the shading is the 20% slopes and it is the regulated slopes. It's the 20%, 20 to 30% slopes and 30.
What's the crosshatching?
5 and above is the darker. The crosshatching is, is the 100 foot wetland buffer.
Or is the wetland buffer, okay. All right. Okay, I heard, I misheard scenic protection overlay and as scenic ridgeline. Okay. Thanks.
Others? Laura, please.
So my questions are, so I know that there is, because this is a demo and then a rebuild. So of the demo of the existing, I'm assuming there was a mention in some of the drawings of that there's a whole cesspool cleanup because of where the original is to where the, the wetland buffer is. So is that part of the demo?
Well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the cesspit is going to be, is going to be pumped out, knocked in and back filled with, with sand or some other inert material.
Okay.
The, the, I can, I can show you the, on another screen, I have a demo plan. And maybe you can see, you can see the existing cottage here.
Don't say anything. You've got a blank screen for me. Oh, here it comes. Thanks.
Okay. Sorry about the, the connection. I don't, I don't, I usually don't have a problem, but existing cottage. Some walkways. The cesspit is generally in this, in this area here, the, this open flat area in the wetland buffer. So we're getting in here in a, up the hill a little bit. That, that presents a conflict with the only viable new septic area. So that's going to be abandoned and will drill in well in a order that is, meets the separation distances to the, to the, to the, to the new septic system. I just have, I also have some construct routes shown during construction. See the, the existing, the existing cottage is also right on the existing wetland buffer. In a little corner of the, of the house is actually in the, in the buffer. So that's part of the reason for the the wetland disturbance and the.
Okay, so I guess my concern is, is that one is to just make sure that we're addressing that, you know, as part of the whole demolition and that we're cleaning up what we need to clean up as part of the demolition. And then I guess my other question is with regard to the new construction, their proposal is for five bathrooms. And so we're looking at a new septic system that basically is going to absorb all of that along with 100% redundancy. And I just want to say that that's, that's pretty huge for five bathrooms.
It's five bedrooms.
I understand, but I saw the drawings, but I looked at the drawings, there's five bathrooms. So just based off of layout. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying that all of them are going to be used at the same time, but that's what they're filing. So there is some concern for that.
Laura, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And others? Okay, I, a quick, a quick question. So maybe Steve, you can then tell us, since I think, I think Kim started the question, the scenic protection overlay, then it does what? What are the general, and again, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, what are the general strictures of that overlay that we should keep in mind? If it's not.
Remember correctly, and Ron, you jump in if I'm misstating it. If you're in the scenic protection overlay district and you're going to build a house of over 3,000 square feet, I believe it is, you need to get site plan approval.
Is that the only strictures just having to come to us?
And no, there's a, there's a few other issues involved. If I could jump in, Steve. Obviously, the requirement is to, is to maintain as much existing vegetation on the site as is possible. There's one significant issue relative to that and that the adjacent property to the south, which is where most of the development is proposed. That property is developed with dwelling immediately adjacent to the property line. So I think the board, again, if you conduct a site visit, would spend some effort to evaluate that and understand whether.
Jason, could you point your cursor to where that other house is, please? Or maybe you have another file for that topic.
Yeah, I can, I have, actually I have an overall map here that you can look at.
Thank you. So while we're looking for that, Ron, does that also include the view from, let's say, the Hudson River or the other side of the river?
That's what I was going to get into. They, they have to deal with existing vegetation, try to maintain it to the extent possible. They have to minimize visibility of the structure from any publicly accessible space, which is an issue that you run into occasionally. So that, that's something that will be of interest to the board and should be better represented. through the applicant's submittal of design documents. So that would be a significant issue to review. And then you also have the ability to to require additional trees along the street frontage, if if that's your determination.
Hate to put undue work on this board, but do we need to drive to Highland Falls and look at the view from the other side of the river to see what the current state is? Or would that be something we can ask the applicant? Because it seems like we have an obligation to the majestic Hudson River and our friends in Orange County to the west to do, in fact, what the purpose of this is, which is to protect the vegetation other than other given what exists already. So what's, how do we pursue that part, Ron?
I I'm just wondering if I'm not speaking for the board, but you might get that or make that determination once you've conducted a site visit and understand existing vegetation that will remain.
Fair, fair. Okay. Jason, can you just point to where the house that will be made is on this? There. Got it. And so the houses to the south, I guess, the south, that's that's part of the Garrison Inn property, the Bruni Lowinson property?
Correct. We have a, there's a tennis court here, it's a garage. Or if that's a habitable, if that's an inhabited structure, I'm not sure what that that one is there. But the main house here is in the middle of the of the property.
Got it. Okay, well, uh, so what's?
And then we have this. There's not much to be seen. I mean, if you go out there, you you really can't see any, you really can't see this house that's on, that's right on Route nine. They're 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 pretty much blocked from each other. If you if you run, if you come down here, you can kind of towards the the edge of the of where the steep slopes are on this property, you can kind of see this development over here. But again, it's a lot of it's screened already.
And that comes back to the issue we're trying to save or maintain existing vegetation to the extent possible. Again, the board can appreciate or understand once you've visited the site.
Okay, well, any other questions, board members? No? Okay, so let's let's go through the the steps. So can I get a motion to classify this project as a minor site plan? Thank you, Kim. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Okay, fine, check. All right, let's make referrals first of the concert. Oh, sorry, Heidi.
I I I don't exactly oppose, but is there any possibility we could not have these votes until after the site visit? I'm pretty confused about what this is going to be like. I I don't feel like I have a very good sense of it.
Well, before, but let's talk about that for a second. So Ron, can you just reiterate or speak for that matter, the standard, the standards for a minor? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, the initial action to be taken is just administrative. I mean, pursuant to your code, first thing you do is classify the project into either major or minor. That's just something you do as a first step. It qualifies as a minor project. So the board is just following, there's only code to make that determination.
To Heidi's question, is there any, let's just use this as a moment for teaching. Is there anything that we would discover if we went on a site visit that would pump bump this up to a major for to Heidi's point?
No, statutorily, it qualifies as a minor based on your code.
Okay, so.
Just an administrative action to take.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's just, before we then take votes, let's just do this, let's, 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 uh, let's do this as a meta task for a second. So the next vote's going to be on a referral to Conservation Board, given the the topography and a referral to Putnam County Department of Planning. That vote is, again, procedural to get them started.
That's correct. That's right. It's all just required mandated by code.
Is everyone okay with that? I'm going to go, let's go ahead and do that. So can I have a motion for referral to the Conservation Board? Dennis, first, second. Heidi, all in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Similarly, a referral to the Putnam County Department of Planning. Kim, second. Dennis, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Abstentions, okay. Now, it's obvious we're going to do a site visit. So I don't, I mean, we can have them, I don't even need to take this pulse of it. Can I have a motion to to schedule a site visit? Kim, I'm going to give Heidi the second on that one. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions, Mr. Send to leases, this is not anything other than the door, we always go to a site visit unless it's a very rare situation, very rare. So that's just normal course of the, Steve, are you talking to us? Oh, fine, okay. Didn't know if you were talking to us. Fine. So let's get out the calendar. Cheryl, what's the earliest we can do it, given letting the neighbors, the rest of the public know?
You want a Sunday, correct?
We love Sundays, right after we all go to church. After we come out of worshiping, we go right to it.
And and before putting the Halloween customs.
Yeah, well, we're not doing it on Halloween weekend. We're doing it the next weekend.
November seventh.
Let's do it on the seventh. Folks on the seventh, how are people on the on the seventh?
It's also daylight saving, so.
Great. Wait, November seventh is daylight savings time, this? What?
Very late.
The World Office access? Access? All right, well, I think I think Mr. Musk and Mr. Bezos' trips to outer space are causing the Earth to not rotate so properly anymore, I think. All right, haha. So is that good with you, Jason and John?
What time is the meeting?
Nine thirty, we do this, yeah, nine thirty. AM.
Seven, seven AM, seven AM.
Yeah, we'll meet you there. It's called the hazing of a new residence.
That's right.
Jason will go in my behalf.
Nine, nine thirty and and Neil, sorry, do we need them to stake anything out, tape anything out, give us some better visual?
I mean, it's a great point, Neil, and I think I think Jason, as you learned when we were over on four oh three, this is obviously a lot bigger of a home and a site than the one on four oh three, but anything you could do to add some dimensionality, I think, does help the board. I think that's a very thoughtful request, Neil.
Yeah, from my, from my perspective, I think the the pool is the closest structure to the steep slopes. That should be indicated as well as the generally area of the house. And then lastly, just relative to that adjacent residence to the east near ninety, if you could lay out the location of the sanitary disposal system in terms of understanding how much clearing will occur for that improvement.
If I, if I could just add one more thing, there, there is a an existing retaining wall that's holding up the the house and 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 the yard in front of it, so that that you that we can reference. We're not going below that retain, that retaining wall is going to be the the boundary, the the boundary of the development is that retaining wall. So we're not going, so you'll be able to see that very clearly.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so we're good on the seventh? Yeah, all right. So Cheryl, do you make the appropriate notifications to the neighbors and the the public so we can note that? And then last, we don't do the public hearing now, that's we'll wait till we reconvene. So anything else, Ron?
That covers it.
All right, great, thank you.
Ron, can we also, wait?
Oh, Steve first, then Jason.
Did you vote on the the secret type two?
No.
Declare it, like, you probably.
No, we did not.
Good catch.
Okay. All right, so for back to let's just back up. So Ron, can you just explain what that means? So before we just take the vote, I want to, I want to be mindful of Heidi's comment about just, let's slow it down a little bit, pause on the, so just explain what we're doing in secret, please.
Sure, and the New York State's secret regulations identify the required extent of environmental review that must be performed for various projects. They also, when those regulations identified that construction or expansive, expansion of a single family, two family, or three family residence on an approved lot is classified as a type two action. Those types of actions, type two actions, are not subject to any environmental review because the regulations themselves determine that these are not one projects or actions that would have a significant impact on the environment. So the regulations themselves identify it as type two. It's really now a matter for the board to formally classify it as a type two action. And as I said earlier, that would then conclude your environmental responsibilities pursuant to the application.
Cool. All right, can I get a motion to that effect, please? The type two, Kim first, I have a second. Neil, thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions, we should be happy in that vote, ladies and gentlemen. We do not therefore have to execute the usual secret process, which takes up a significant amount of this board's time and will the rest of the evening. Thank you for that. I think we're good, right? All right, Jean, Jason, thank you very much. Nice talking. We'll see you on November seventh. No, it's okay. We're going to get, we're going to ask Jennifer to get you a up speed, a higher speed upgrade there. I'll put in the, I'll put in the requisite file for you. Okay.
Let's let's get to. Get Dennis, get Dennis in on that deal.
And get Dennis in. All right, let's move on to River, our friends at River View Industries. So Ron, catch us up on where we are since last we met.
Yeah, the board, the board, I think, was just trying to conclude their secret responsibilities at the last meeting. I had submitted a, a suggested EAF part two that the board has been evaluating for some time. At the last meeting, it decided not to adopt that and raise some questions for the applicant to respond to. They've since made submittal that the board should have seen by now. And separately, he's also submitted his own type two EAF. So the board has been competing to part two AAFs to review. But it's a matter for you to basically review the applicant's commitments in terms of the traffic movements between this site and the repair garage site on the east side of Route nine. And once you're done with that and can adopt a part two, I think you'd then be in a position to consider seeking formal resolutions for the next meeting.
Well, just, just, just as a matter of process, can you just confirm why we are not going to a part three on this? Just remind us all for the purposes of education.
But we could if you wish, but the the typical action, unless unless it's a very large project, and and you've had a few of those, obviously. Typically, a part three is not performed. So you evaluate, the EAF part one is filed by the applicant, you review that, develop your own part two, weigh those impacts. And then you, then you either make a determination or you seek a part three statement. I don't think the board's ever, ever sought further information than has been clarified through the parts through part two statement.
Okay, and just remind us, Ron, what, when we left, we left this last time, we had the issues of basically crossing Route nine. Which obviously.
Ultimately, that traffic was the one issue. And as I said, the submittal from the applicant is October seventh letter to the board identifies a variety of commitments to try to address the board's concerns over how those movements will occur. The applicant consultant, Glenn Watson, can speak to that if the board wishes.
And Glenn, maybe you should just highlight those items that are on your memo for the purposes of the board.
Yeah, sure. But first, I'd like to say that I managed to come into the office where our video and audio is a little bit better than Jason keeps in his bedroom.
Wow, that's an internal matter for you to deal with on on Friday.
Anything out of me for that one.
Wow, well, again, I thought, I thought Jennifer owns the company, not you. So that's a whole other topic.
Man. Throw, throw in Jason under the bus.
You know, I looked in, I looked in, I looked into a couple of things with regard to the crossing the road, and I spoke with the applicant about it, and I outlined basically his procedure in 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 doing that. He does limit his time to outside rush hour time, which, and he does use a yard truck. Basically, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a truck that it's specifically designed to move things in close tight places. And he also has a person out there to direct, direct traffic while he's doing, while he's doing the move. I did look into the idea of actually requiring or having him do a flag. I and he would be willing to do that, but basically if you, I was inquired about that at and and I found out that if in order to actually have permission to use a flag on a highway, you actually have to have to have a permanent installation like they do at a construction site or something like that. So that's not really an option. So but what we do have is a is you have a procedure, it's within a limited number of hours, it uses a yard truck, which increases mobility, and the yard truck is equipped with strobe lights that are that are flashing during the operation, and there is and there is a a an assistant on the ground to help control traffic. That's what we have. And be willing to put that on, on, it's not on the site plan now, it's a, it's on the letter explaining that. And we certainly would be willing to put that on the site plan as a condition of approval.
Does anyone need a refresh on the, on the, on the project, or is it clear what what Glenn is referring to and Ron beforehand? Clear? Are those stipulations acceptable to everyone?
Sounds like we don't have a choice.
Well, look, let's, let's recall, one of our big sticking point, we're two sticking points. One was on, and Heidi brought this up a number of times thoughtfully. The place was kind of messy, if not kind of, it was messy, and boy, you know, it doesn't seem so great for oil. But remember, the Conservation Board put us a letter, said those, the measures they are taking are acceptable to Conservation Board. Second issue was traffic crossing nine. We have made our comments known to the town board about Route nine. We have made our comments known about crossing Route nine. We can't solve the problem with more volume on Route nine. But you can address, and I think Glenn is suggesting the applicants accepting some mitigations on crossing Route nine. So that's, I think, where we are on this one. And so I'll leave it at that. So Glenn, I personally would accept those provisions. I don't know if others find that acceptable. Kim?
Yeah, the only comment I actually have is that my name is Connor, not O'Connor, but.
Actually, I thought it was either was it me, O'Connell, and then it's like me and you put together, so we're the same person? I don't know.
There we go, there we go.
All right, well, Neil Zuckerman is in favor of it, so.
No, I'm actually with Kim on this one. It's like, I I don't know the answer to this. I mean, you know, we can't control, there's certain things that we just can't control, and I think that this is it.
Other remarks? Whether on the adding terms or we can talk about the 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 part two? Heidi, any comments? No?
I mean, no, I guess. I mean, I think it's sad, very sad, but I guess that there's limits to our authority, very sad.
Well, I I would tell you, so do you want to, you're more than welcome to to explicate that a bit more.
I mean, I don't want to wait, take everyone's time. I've already said it, and apparently there, we don't really have the ability to require a cleanup of the site first. I just feel like the community would expect of us as the planning board that, you know, to mistakenly, they might think that we have more authority than we do. That's how it is.
Well, let let me just tell you, Mike, the the good news is that many of us, Kim maybe especially, drive by frequently in this spot, given the proximity of her house. And I think we have enough eyes on as just members of the public to notice that with this cleanup approved that by this, because remember, this whole thing was about a violation. So we're trying, we're trying to right a wrong. And I think you're making this right. You are doing this, you are going to make this right. And if the applicant doesn't do what's right, that's what Greg Warner's job is, to then say, hey, we fixed that's what Greg Warner's job is to then say, hey, we fixed just your problem and you haven't done it yet. And so I, I looked at the applicant, much like ESP. And I think we all remember, not all of us, but some of us remember that one. ESP was a messy property and through our work together, it got cleaned up. There are others that are not so clean. I don't want to mention any names right now, but there are other ones we've done direct, the rectifying and hasn't fully cleaned, but I think this is going to be in the right direction. But I think we all are noticing and I put Glenn, I asked your, your client to notice that the board wants it done when it gets approved.
All right, thanks Neil. That helps a lot. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Heidi, others? Neil? Nope. All right. So I think, so Ron, I guess it's a secret determination at this point?
At this point, you should adopt a part two statement. As I said, I had filed one many months ago.
I like, I like how your adjective around months changes. It's a few months, a bunch of months, now it's many months.
Whatever you want to call May, you can call it.
Springtime. Okay.
It hasn't been a year, I know that.
So, so can I get a motion to adopt the part two secret? Actually, let me pause that. Let me get a motion that we can discuss. A motion, you know, we got a motion, can I have a second?
Wait, for what, Neil?
To move the secret determination. So then we can, we, we have to move to a dot, sorry, not termination, we have to adopt the part two. I'd like to then, I'd like to then discuss it if people have questions. So we have a, we have a, we have a motion. I need a second. Okay, thank you, Laura. It ain't discussion of the secret part two. We've talked about it a bunch of times. We've moved some boxes.
Neil, Neil, you have, you have two before you. You have the one that Ron, that surfaced after I submitted the one that Laura asked me to, asked us to do last month. So I think your motion has to distinguish.
To be honest, I have sitting in front of me the one that says suggested. I don't know.
It's up, if it's read up in the corner, that's mine, but I, I, I don't know which one you want to submit.
Now I'm, now I'm confused because has anyone done a side by side comparison about the differences between the two?
There, there are minor differences, but they're not material. I mean, I think you could adopt either one. So if you want to. Glenn's is, Glenn's is the one that you probably have in hand. So it might be simplest. I've given, I've sent minded a few times in the past.
Yeah, many times. We got it, many, many months. We got it. Well, can, can anyone identify what's different between Ron's and Glenn's? No, Glenn can, even though Glenn did it.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't seen Ron's, to tell you the truth.
But he gave it to you many months ago, Glenn.
I think the more recent one is the one you should approve.
Yeah, exactly. The one in the, I assumed that the one in the packet superseded the other one.
That's what I thought as well, but you know, let's, let's.
To keep this on the up and up, let's, can I have a motion to adopt the, the suggested version that is in our packets from Glenn Watson? Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Laura. Okay, any discussion? Laura, second. Any discussion of it? Anything that jumps out at folks they want to discuss? That we haven't discussed already in the many months? No? No, no one? Okay, I think this fairly addresses all the comments we've talked about before. And I think, again, I think this rights some wrongs, it makes it righter, not perfect, but righter, even if it's not a real word. So then can I get a motion to make a determination? I think we're at that point. Yes, Ron?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I'd like to adopt a negative declaration on this.
Normally, normally we just.
Hold on.
You're not, you're not making a negative declaration, you're just adopting the part.
The part two.
All right, slow down, slow down. Let's adopt the part two then. All right, well, then we just do that with, so with the vote. Sorry, we didn't vote. We just moved in second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions.
So the appropriate thing to do now would be direct Ron to prepare a secret negative determination, that negative declaration for consideration and approval resolution.
Okay, can I then have a, kind of a motion to a direct Ron to prepare a secret negative declaration, please?
So move.
Thank you, Neil. Second. Thank you, Laura. All in favor, I, I opposed abstentions and then a site plan approval. I have a motion to have Ron, direct Ron to create the site plan approval documents for adoption next time. Thank you, Kim. Second. Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions.
Thank you.
All right, so Ron, thank you. Move on to that for next month. And now on to our second Route, Route 9 commercial project that has been here for some time, 3622 Route 9 LLC. I think all we have to do is I thought all we had to do is hit the approval resolutions. Is that correct? Was there anything?
I guess, just to refresh the board's memory, at the last meeting, when you did direct that the resolutions be prepared, you would also discuss the issue of access between commercial vehicles and passenger vehicles. There's two site accesses proposed. The applicant through transmittal letter to you has identified two notes that he's added to the plan to address that access concern. I presume the board has seen that. Presuming that's acceptable, you can then consider action on each of the approval results.
Is it, Adam, I don't know if you want to spend, provide any more clarity or not clarity, but description of what was provided, please?
Yep. So there was really two items that were requested by the board at the last meeting. Those have both been provided on the site plan. One was just a note, a provision that basically just states that any potential future tenants of the site would have to abide by the terms of the site plan. So we've, we've added that note. The other item is the, as Ron mentioned, the use of the two proposed driveways. So the southerly driveway has been designated as the, the only, the only access for, for trucks. So we've shown in a couple of different places, we've shown a sign at the northerly entrance, no trucks, so that that entrance would be strictly for passenger vehicle use. And and we've also added a note to the same effect. So those were the two items that were requested at the last meeting and we've, we've included those with what we submitted this month.
Any comments, questions for Adam? None? Okay. All right. Well, this is pretty administrative. Folks, you have two resolutions, one, the secret negative declaration and the resolution of the site plan resolution.
We're clear, Neil. I think Ron submitted a slightly revised approval resolution. You want to make sure you're using the right one.
It would be second, right?
Yeah, so the secret, the negative.
Right.
Go ahead, Ron.
Excuse me. Yeah, the negative declaration would be the first action to take.
Yeah. So can I have a motion to adopt the negative declaration for secret for 3622? It was, again, it was emailed by Ron to us a couple of days ago. Have a motion, please. Thank you, Kim. Second.
I'll second, Neil.
Thank you, Neil. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions. Okay, and then we have obviously the, the resolution, the site plan approval itself. Can I have a motion to adopt the site plan resolution, site plan approval, excuse me? Motion, please. Thank you, Laura. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Neil. Any discussion? Go ahead, I.
I would just say that I think it's really nice that Adam was very responsive to all of our comments. I, and you know, I'm not thrilled that it's going to increase truck traffic on nine, but I do feel like the developer was very responsive to every, to all the points we raised, which I at least appreciate and, and you know, that does make it a lot easier to vote for it, in my opinion.
I appreciate you saying that. I'll pass that along to the applicant and yeah, happy, happy to work with the board and you understand your, your concerns about Route 9, but you know, certainly I think this is going to be a, th- this is a site that's going to function well, it's not going to be an issue, you know, it's not going to create issues along Route 9. And I think just from a site perspective, compared with what's there now, with what we've proposed, I think it's going to be a big improvement.
Good. All right. So we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Okay, that passes. Adam, best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask, since it's the prerogative of the chair to change the order as well as not cover things, what I'd like to do is I'd like to Johnson and Rinderman next before we get into a bunch of time with Shakespeare and we don't get out of it, we have to push someone again. I don't need to ask permission of the applicant and their, of Shakespeare and others, but I, but I, as a courtesy, I'd like to just check with Mr. Hollis or Mr. Watson if they're okay with that. You can, Cheryl, if you could just let Dan Hollis in. So he can just comment if he has a comment about me moving up Johnson-Rinderman.
Appreciate, I appreciate the courtesy, Mr. Chairman, but that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So what I'd like to ask is let's start with Johnson-Rinderman. I am going to ask also if we can take a three minute break, if anyone would not mind that. I apologize. That we need a three minute break and then return and we'll do Johnson-Rinderman, okay? Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the indulgence. Okay, we have Kim. Neil, so we have a full house. Everyone's back. We're on Neil, the return. Okay. Okay. Okay, Neil, can you hear me? Neil Toman?
Yeah, we're back.
Okay, great. Okay. So is this, I guess, Jason, is this you?
Yeah, I'm going to leave my video off because I think that helped last time.
Good.
So are we ready to start here?
Yes, please.
Everybody can see this?
No, we just, we, no, no, you did not, your screen is not off.
So just on this, just the reason the reason why we're in front of the board is for is for construction of a single family residence. I believe that's the only, we're not in a ridge line and we are not in the scenic protection overlay. We do have wetlands and and steep slopes on the park end with with, with some hatching and the steep slopes are indicated, the, the range of steep slopes are indicated with the, with the shading.
Cheryl, does any permission to share a screen?
Yes, yes, permission.
Okay.
Jason, I'm going to suggest if we do this a lot more, you're going to have to go to the office. It's, it's pretty hard to hear you. Even with the video off, it just, it just goes in waves of in and out. So I'm, no, no, no slate. I know it's tough and COVID, but.
Next time I'll, I'll go from the office.
Yeah.
I'll just, at the office.
Sorry.
So again, the property, the, the wetlands buffer is indicated with the, with the hatching. And the steep slopes are indicated with the, with the, with the, the two slope ranges are indicated with the are illustrated. We are in the rural conservation zoning district. This, these two properties which are the subject of this development are off to this other. If I go to this map here, you can see all the properties that are owned by the applicant and properties one and and two are the subject total approximately 12 and a half acres. So these are the two properties that we are developing on. There is a property, the pond property generally but generally speaking, in Duchess County and in the town of Fishkill. So we will be taking access off of Mountain Brook Drive. There's an existing reservoir, sort of like a existing maintenance road that we intend to utilize as our proposed as our proposed driveway through the most of the route. Be the woods. But other than that, it's, it's, we're generally using an existing graded traveled, traveled way. If I can zoom in here. We're coming down off of Mountain Brook Drive. We got about 200 feet of, of new down the slope here. And then we're coming back out onto the, onto an existing old road that, that goes through the property. So we intend to use that to the extent practical. We have a proposed garage near the, near the road. Again, this is at the very end of, of Mountain Brook Drive. We have a stream crossing here that will require wetland conservation board approval. A lot of this, a lot of this proposed reconstruction of this, of this driveway is through the is through the wetland buffer anyways. And then we have the house site, the house site, the, the septic site and the well. The, the well and septic, we got those approvals in today. So we'll get those out. The proposed residents with the two, with the two wings here. And here we have the, the resident. And again, we're, we're not disturbing any of the, of the steep slopes with this development. These were, the, the wetlands were backed by Steve Marino and Max, Max has been out here several times. And, and has, has verified the wetland. The wetland. Boundary. That's about it. We do have some Yeah, I mean, that, that's about it.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I hit, I did that. Sorry, I'm sorry. I hit, I did that on you. Ron, any, thank you, Jason. Ron, anything for you?
Yeah, we've got a technical memorandum that the board's had since early in the week. As the applicant indicates, they require a site plan approval from the board due to the size of the residence. Again, as we've, as we've talked about for the earlier application, this is the first opportunity you've had to review the proposal. And at that initial meeting, you typically classify the project pursuant to the zoning code. It qualifies as a minor project, so that action or that classification should be made tonight by the board, just to identify the procedures that will be followed to move forward the application. Again, relative to seeker, it being a residential project pursuant to the secret regulations, qualifies as a type-two action, which would, once you so classified, will conclude your environmental review obligations, so that likewise could be done at tonight's meeting. Referrals that are involved are to, but county department of planning relative to GML two thirty-nine M. Department of County Department of Health for the new sanitary disposal system and well. And, and again, because there's activities proposed within the buffer area of the wetlands and the onsite stream corridor, referral to the conservation board should be accomplished as well.
And any, anything about the project you want us to, you want to highlight besides its size and proximity?
Well, again, you can recognize that it's, it's immediately adjacent to a pond on the adjacent property is an existing dam which forms that lake. It formerly used to be a reservoir used by Fishkill. It's since been abandoned. But again, the, the environmental issues are, are very evident with the inlet outlet streams in proximity to the development proposed. The steep slopes, it, it won't disturb, but it'll be running immediately adjacent to and the very long access that's involved in the project. Actually, that access relates to one other referral you might wish to consider, and that's to the local fire department when you make the other referrals as well. So that should be something you consider.
Okay. Okay, questions? Steve, anything to add? Board members, questions about the project for either Jason or the, the, our team? Heidi, please.
Well, I guess my question is, I know that there's an effort in the Hudson Valley to try to remove unused dams. And I'm, and restore the free flowing, flowing of streams and rivers here. Will this project affect that? I mean, if, if at some point, you know, like Riverkeeper were to recommend that this dam be removed, if it, if the reservoir is not being used, would, would this project affect whether or not the dam could be removed? I, I mean, I'm not sure that lies within our purview, but I'm just curious whether, you know, it kind of looks like it's either down, like it might be downstream of the, of the dam. Or maybe it's upstream. I don't know. But I know that there's a, you know, there's been a lot of material coming out recently about trying to get rid of unused dams that are no longer, you know, funk, like important to the area. And in fact, I, I know, I was just at a meeting in Cold Spring where, you know, restoring a dam is gonna cost you millions and millions of dollars. And I'm just wondering, like, is this gonna lead to some situation where the community would have to restore this dam at the, at community expense or not be able to pull it down if it wants to?
I was under the impression the dam was on private property. Am I wrong about that?
No, the, the dam is on private.
And if a dam is on private property, does that mean that the private property owner has to meet, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear. Sorry, Jason. I didn't mean.
The, the dam is, is totally, the dam and, and the pond, it's all on, it's all totally on private property.
Okay, but still, I mean, if, if a dam is on private property.
I mean, the owner has no intent.
Anyway, anyway, I got my comment out. I, it's.
Jason, I'm sorry, digitally, we just cannot hear your response. The full sentence is not coming out. So maybe you could ask Glenn to say it, what you're saying. The owner has no intention, then we lost you.
If I, if I could speak for a second, just.
Thank you.
I'm not an advocate for the applicant, but they have no intention to perform any work in the area of the dam at all. Any, any inspection obligations or maintenance of that facility typically are, clearly would be the homeowner's responsibility to accomplish since it's on his property.
To me, that doesn't fully answer the question of whether at some point the dam could have to be repaired to not, you know, at community expense, because it otherwise would flood the whole, if there's damage to it. I mean, most private property owners cannot afford to repair a dam if at some point it's defective. But besides that, I just put out there that there's just a lot of material in the public space about the value to communities and particular, particularly ones like ours that are flood prone and that have major problems handling stormwater. And where, for example, I mean, if anybody's been attending the Cold Spring discussion about the dam and the massive amount of money that will be spent, would have to be spent to repair it. And the deal, and dealing with massive stormwater damage to lower Cold Spring. I'm just asking about this issue because it seems to me that being forward-thinking, it's not just like you could just, okay, properties downstream or upstream from a dam and think, okay, it doesn't matter if they're on private property. I'm just thinking like, what's the impact for decisions that might have to be made in the future? And how are those taken into account?
Jason, can you speak to the issue? Does the, does that have a D C dam classification currently? My understanding was that that's not a very high dam.
It, it's not a very high dam at all. It's probably about four feet high. I mean, I don't think that it's, it's about four, four feet high at the downstream. I'm not even sure that it would be classified as, as a dam.
Well, Jason, we did, we did go over this a little bit. Sorry to barge in. Jason, we did go over this at the pre-app meeting. And I, I gave the applicant some, some, some people that they might want to talk to at New York State dams. And do you, do you know if they were able to follow through on that?
I don't believe so. If, Cheryl, if you could let the, the owner in, Scott Johnson, you could probably speak to that. I think he's done some work on that.
Yeah. Well, while we're waiting for that, Heidi, I think I can weigh in on this a little bit. At the pre-app meeting, we, we did tell them that it is, it is a, an impoundment on private property and although we don't have a lot of jurisdiction with this, we did, we did tell them that it, it, it can ultimately be an insurance issue for them. And that, 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 I mean, even, I mean, that's just trying to give them some good advice that they might want to talk to New York State dams. The way I look at it, it's a class A. It's not holding much water. It's not a, it's an earth and burn. But they, they might want to talk to New York State dams about how to, how to deal with it, how to keep it up to code and, and, and reduce their overall liability.
Way in on that. Listen, if the dam is on their property, I think it's, you know, and they're building a, a house that might be affected if the dam was removed. It's a perfectly legitimate question to raise. Hey, what about this dam? Do you plan on keeping it? You understand the upkeep is going to be expensive. There may be insurance issues and so forth. But at the end of the day, if the applicant comes back and says, the dam's on my property. I intend on maintaining the dam. The dam will be kept up. I'm gonna build my house there anyway, even if the dam should fail or be removed. It may have impacts on my house, or at least would have impacts on how the dam might eventually have to be moved. That's on the applicant's head. It's well within, they're all within their rights saying, we want to keep the dam and build the house here. I mean, if, if they say they're gonna, gonna keep it up, you can impose conditions and so forth, but you really, you really have to take their word for it.
Yeah, now that, that, that's how, Steve, thanks, but that, that is how it was laid out at the pre-app meeting. We, we presented it as such. It's, it's just something that we thought they might want to keep an eye on or check into for their, for their own benefit.
I'm, I'm the applicant. I don't know if you can see me or hear me. Can?
We can hear you, Mr. Johnson. We cannot see you.
Okay, um, I'm not sure if I can.
Don't, don't worry. We don't, we don't, we don't have to see you. We, we'd love to see you, but we don't have to, so. Continue.
Well, thank you and thank you for the discussion and thank you for reviewing our application. We did, when we sat down with Ron a few weeks ago, he recommended that we speak to Baron Ha Fu Ganfa with New York State dams. And we've been monitoring this, the, the dam situation very carefully. We have every intention of keeping the dam and also keeping the dam in very good condition. I think these dams need to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis, and I've been talking to Max about this over the last couple of years. I think if you go out to the site, you'll see that the dam is mostly a burned dam. There's a very small portion of it that's a concrete kind of wall and the wall is, it's, as, as, as Jason said, it's really about two to three feet tall. So we intend to maintain it. I know that there's big issues with the conservation board about us doing anything on the other side of the dam. As you get, you know, if you cross the kind of, kind of the concrete area of the dam that you can, you can actually walk across. When you get to that other side, there's some very rare flora and fauna and trees in there. And we've been asked to like be very cognizant of that, and they don't want us to touch anything that happens like along the edge of the dam, along the edge of the pond. So it's, it's kind of like a delicate balance. But we bought the property with the dam on it and with the pond, and we fully intend to keep it there and put our house there. Regardless of whether, you know, it becomes a stream again or not, we want our house at that location, and we do plan to, to keep the dam up. And in, in good, and I guess in proper working order. I mean, it really is just a concrete wall at this point.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Other questions? Hi, Kim, please.
I'm gonna ask the question I always ask. Is this a short-term rental property? Airbnb?
Absolutely not. We don't tend to entertain anything that has to do with Airbnb. Right now, I'm currently talking to you from our house in Florida, which we, you know, we, we occupy probably about two or three months out of the year, and we do not Airbnb, Airbnb our house in Florida, and we don't Airbnb our apartment in New York City. That's just not something that we do. This is for my home. It's our home and it's a home for our family and my, our extended family, which is my kids and grandkids. When they come, we don't have grandkids yet, but fingers crossed.
Like, like fingers crossed, like as in the next couple of weeks or fingers crossed in the next couple of decades?
Well, we need a couple, we need a couple weddings first, so probably.
Okay, I said, there's no, I'm not crossing my fingers. That may be a long, a long finger crossing activity, so call, call me after the wedding. Okay, of course, you don't need to have that to have children, of course, but. Okay, all right, Kim, I'm sorry, any else?
Now, the only other question I have is, we're obviously gonna do a site visit. Is, how hard is it to get in there?
It's, it's actually very easy to walk in there. You can walk up an existing path that you can, it's at the end of Mountain Brook Drive. There's a gravel road that is on the scenic Hudson land. And then if you go up the hill and take a right, you'll go right down to the road that Jason was talking about, which is the access road, and you just keep walking till you get to the pond. It's really obvious. And I'm happy to, to be there when you have the site visit.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, I, I myself do not have any questions, so let's, in, if everyone's okay, and I, we had a little primer a few minutes ago. We're gonna copy the same approach. We're gonna classify this as a minor project. Any more explanation necessary in that? Okay, may have a motion to make to classify this as a minor. Thank you, Kim. Second. Laura, thank you all. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed extensions. Okay, let's make a referral. We're gonna make, I think, we'll make three. We'll start with the conservation board. Can I have a motion to make a referral to the conservation board, given the topography and the wetland proximities? May the motion, please. Scott, are you want to say something?
Um, no, I just wanted to say if you do a site visit, the fourteenth works for me.
All right, let's, let's hold on that, Scott. Hold on, hold on. Can you go back on mute, please, Scott? Thank you. All right, sorry, where was I? Motion for conservation for Laura first, Heidi second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions. Okay, Department of Planning, County Planning, number of motion to make a referral, please, to County Planning. Kim first. Laura, Dennis second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed extensions. Okay, this one will, maybe we'll have a discussion for a fire department referral. Have a motion refer to the fire department. Kim first. Second. Laura, ain't discussion? I, I would say this, that we didn't do it earlier. Do we feel this is necessary for this property? Yes, Kim, why?
Really long driveway.
Really long driveway. Good reason, good reason. Okay, any other discussion? Those North Highland guys don't have anything to do anyway. Might as well give them something to do. Okay, so, just kidding, just kidding, Van Tassel and company. Just joking around. I love the fire department. We need them, we need them. And they do important work. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed extensions. Okay, type-two action for Secra is our next move. Any comment, anyone, everyone understand what we're doing on that one? Same thing as last time. Kind of motion declare this type-two action for, under Secra, motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Neil. Second. Anybody? Kim, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions. Now, Mr. Johnson, we will talk about the, the site plan. Sorry for the bureaucracy. Obviously, if I could do it, I would just have that be mechanical, but it's not. Okay, site plan. I know we all want to do one. That's what we're gonna do. It obviously requires it. Can I have a motion to that effect for a site plan? Visit, yes, a visit. Kim, Dennis second. Okay. Actually, we might as well discuss now what the date is and then vote on the specific date. So, I, Mr. Johnson, we already have one on the seventh in the morning. Would you be able to join us in, at ten-thirty on the seventh? I know you're in Florida and enjoying the nice weather as we're starting to get cold here. Would you like to come on the seventh?
I would love to, but I'm not going to be in town. That's why I was hoping maybe we could talk about the fourteenth.
Let's see. Our next meeting is on the eighteenth, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's okay. I'm not sure we'll have a chance to do. I guess we can talk about it four days later. That's, Ron, you okay with that? Was that too soon before the meeting to put up notes and things?
It's, it's okay with me. I just wonder, is, is Jason gonna be available if we do it on the seventh? He's gonna be there for the, for the other side inspection.
I would be available on the seventh, yes.
Mr. Johnson, do you feel obliged to join us?
I know Jason can handle it for me. That's.
It'll be better for us just because we're, as a board of volunteers, November's gonna get busy for us, so I'd like to just sandwich this in on the, on the seventh, if that's okay. We can always, you know, FaceTime you, although I don't know what the cell reception is up at your property, so.
That's, that's fine, and we could try to FaceTime if you need to.
We won't let Jason do it because he clearly doesn't have great cellular technology.
It's gotta be better than what Jason has, so.
I'm never gonna let this down.
Never, absolutely never, Jason.
Oh, absolutely not.
Jason, you're New Nick Davis low bandwidth Snyder. You didn't know that? All right, so we're gonna do this on the seventh at ten-thirty. Okay, Cheryl, we'll do one hour down. No, Kim?
I guess, yeah, because.
Are you too close?
No, no, I'm wondering if that's not close, not close enough, but yeah, that's fine.
Well, it's gonna take us.
You're being sensible. It's fine.
If you think we should push it out more.
No, I'd rather be ten-thirty than eleven.
It's gonna take us fifteen minutes to drive up there from Juniper, because it's all the way at the other end. It's gonna take us fifteen minutes to drive up there from Juniper, cause it's all the way to the other end of Phillips Town. So it's fifteen minutes. That means we had to be there in a way that forty-five minutes at our previous location. I think that's gonna be sufficient. What do you think, Ron or Jason for the first site visit?
No, I think that's gonna work.
Okay, ten thirty it is then, folks. Uh, ten thirty a.m., nine thirty down, downtown and ten thirty uptown. For our site visits. Um, and, uh, I hope someone provides us the, uh, the lamb stew. That still was the best food that anyone ever gave us at a site visit. No one remembers that. Kim remembers that.
No.
No, that was at our, our now deceased former member, uh, the board, uh, Mary Ellen Fingers' property. Uh, we visited her property that was gonna become the emergency center for Indian Point. She gave us some lamb stew, very tasty. Okay, I'm.
Scott, Scott, call, sorry, Scott, call the guys at New York State Dams. Call Barano.
Oh, you're gonna ask him to call for some lamb stew. Okay, uh, I think.
One thing, did we, did you, did you make the referral to County DOH? I missed it, or, or was that part of that?
We did planning, did county planning. We did not county, do, do county DOH. We'll do DOH. Okay, so we've got our, we'll do that as a last one. Can I have a referral for County Department of Health? Thank you, Kim, second. Thank you, Laura. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed abstentions. Okay, I think we're done with all the, the perfunctory referrals. Jason, we'll see you on the seventh for that one, Mr. Johnson. Hopefully you can join us via FaceTime.
Thank you very much.
All right, great. Okay, uh, on to, um, Garrison Golf Course. It is nine twenty-seven right now. I'm gonna try and see if we can limit this to ten o'clock to do two and a half hours. Here's what I'd like to do. Our primary goal tonight is just to talk about the completeness of the part three that I know AKRF was in constant dialogue with the applicant to do. I have two comments before we do that. The first is, there has been and continues to be publicly mentioned lack of clarity of the process. So I'm just gonna look at the participants for a second. You just give me, indulge me for one second. Okay, well, I, I, I will, uh, I'll, I'll use a name. I assume it's the same person. Ms. Calhoun has put a letter to the editor of the PCNR about not being clear to the process. I feel I've been trying virtually every single month that we discussed this topic to talk about the process. I clearly have failed miserably, uh, to explain clearly the process. So I see, I see a different, uh, Calhoun. You see a Marie Calhoun. I assume that's the same one. So for Ms. Calhoun and for anyone else interested, I'm gonna turn the floor now to Mr. Gaba to extremely clearly and slowly explain the process. Uh, Mr. Gaba will not miss anything, and we will observe the Q and A if there are any more process questions. And I hope this will then, at least for one month's purpose, cease and desist questions about a lack of clarity in the process. I'm trying desperately to be transparent and to be clear with the public. I hope that is acknowledged, at least noticed. So Steve, the floor is yours to explain the process for this application.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you. All right. There are basically three different applications involved here. First is a zoning change. The Garrison Golf Plan Development District had certain uses that were allowed within it. The applicant is proposing different uses to go within the Garrison Golf Plan Development District. So the law in regard to the zoning for this property, the Garrison Golf Plan Development District, needs to be changed. The other two applications are for subdivision and site plan approval for the Garrison Golf property. For any of those, applications can be acted on. We have to complete SECRE review. So the planning board is undertaking as lead agency, SECRE review on all three of the applications. Once the SECRE review is completed, the next step will be for the town board to act on the petition for a zoning change. If the town board grants the petition for a zoning change, planning board will then continue to process the site plan and subdivision application. Now, in order to develop the zoning law that the applicant needs to proceed with this project, it has to have some input from the planning board as to what would be acceptable and what wouldn't be, a preliminary review, if you will. And that preliminary review will also inform the SECRE process, the SECRE review that the planning board is conducting as lead agency. So what's happening is, planning board is taking a preliminary look at the site plan. Doesn't have the full site plan before it, because the applicant doesn't know what's going to be allowed until the town board adopts the zoning law. If it adopts the zoning law, changing the zoning at all. And when the planning board is satisfied that it has enough information to make its secret determination, it will do that. The next step, once the, the part three EAF is accepted, will be for the planning board to hold a public hearing in regard to this project. And that, that public hearing will help the planning board make its secret determination, which will either be a positive declaration or a negative declaration, one way or another, we'll get to the end of the process. Once that's done, the town board will adopt the zoning one. Now, the town board can begin to process the zoning law to kind of help move things along if it's so inclined before the secret determination is made, but it can't act on it. It hasn't started yet, and it may not, but we'll, we'll see how that works out. But, but for the time being, next step is that the, the planning board will complete the EAF, hold a public hearing and make a secret determination. Then the town board will act, and if the town board acts favorably, we're back to the planning board for site plan and subdivision approval, at which time the application will be decided. So unless there are any questions, it's about as clear as I think I can be.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just gonna reiterate one point, which I think I've made in every single meeting we've had with this application. Once this board has finished going through the part three, the extensive part three that the applicant, and thank you very much for your efforts to date, have put together. Once we go through each of those chapters and discuss it in sequence, we will have the applicant describe. We'll have our advisors, AKRF comment. We'll have board ask questions. Then after we've done that, then after we've done that, we will then have a public hearing. We will discuss and hear the public's input on what we know about the environmental impact of the thousand plus. I have not counted, but the voluminous number of pages. And then after the public has commented, however long that takes, then this board will do its determination. It's vote on the pos or neg that. That is the process. We've said that over and over again. Now, I, I dare ask the public for input. Are there any questions about the process? Has this, I hope this is clear. I, let me just ask the applicant, is that clear as you understand? I'll start with Mr. Hollis.
We understand the process.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, and I, and I apologize for belaboring this, but for the purpose of transparency and clarity with the public, I just feel like I hear this too often, that there's a lack of clarity of the process. I hope that is clear for those paying attention at home or on YouTube or any other digital communication.
Let me add one more thing, Neil, as far as that goes. So the planning board's going to hold its public hearing in order to complete, on the site plan subdivision, in order to complete the secret process. The, uh, town board's going to act, the application's going, then gonna come back to the planning board, at which time it will be fleshed out further once you know what the zoning allows. And if the information that comes in is different or new, or, 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 you know, their, their renderings or what have you, enough for the board to determine that another public hearing is necessary on the fleshed out project, then it's possible, maybe even prob, but possible at least, that there'll be a second public hearing.
Right now, we're tracking to do a SECRE review. That is the purpose of, we are a committee of the whole, so to speak.
That is.
To focus on SECRE. That is what we're doing. Okay, so that's where we are. That's the process. Okay, second thing I have to a- address for briefly is, we've received, this is back to correspondence. Our board, board, we've received a memo, as you may know, from Max Garfinkel, who runs the, um, conservation operations of the town. Uh, National Natural Resources Officer. They, the conservation board's asked, uh, and I don't have the specifics on it, to jointly, to jointly participate with us with this application, as well as Hudson Highlands Reserve. I'd like this, I, I'd like to offer to that, that board, the conservation, but they're more than welcome to join us at our, at our board meetings, if they'd like, to listen to, to, and even, I think it's procedurally, it's okay, Steve. You'd have to tell us whether they can ask questions or not, whether they can be a, just an attendee or be a participant or panelist, if you will, while we're on Zoom.
Neil, I, I think the appropriate thing is to move on with processing the part three EAF and discussing that. I really don't know that I don't want to get too much into discussion with the public at this point.
No, no, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm addressing what Max Garfinkel was asked us. We received a letter from the conservation board.
Um, I'm not sure what you're referencing, actually.
No, it's this memo that was in our packets. It's a letter from Max Garfinkel on behalf of the conservation board, asking to jointly, uh.
Yeah. The board does not hold joint meetings with the conservation board. The conservation board can send memos to this board in providing advice and like, they can attend individually if they want, not as a meeting, but as, as individual members of the public. But there, there's no, there's no grounds for a joint meeting with the conservation board on this, this application.
So could you, could you, could you provide a communication then? I know it's silly to have a one town board talk to another town board, but could you provide said communication, either to Max or the chair of the conservation board of that effect, please?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, so here's what we're gonna do tonight, guys. Um, we're gonna do the following. I think we'd like to, unless Dan, Dan, you may have some intro remarks about the additions to the part three, but what I'd really want to do is hear Chris and Aaron make our talk about the completeness. And then with it, with its completeness, uh, and any other things they'd like to see. I'd like to then schedule a dedicated meeting, as I've alluded to in the la, the last couple of meetings. We've done at least two before that our call. I'd like to schedule that dedicated meeting for just this, uh, discussion around the part three, uh, prior to the week before our regular scheduled meeting, so we can give you a dedicated block of time to start making some progress on the part three.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make a couple of comments and maybe ask a question of, uh, of Aaron or Chris. We're prepared. We have our full team with us. I, I won't take time to introduce them. All you know us all by now. Um, but we received the memo from AKRF this morning, and nearly all of the ninety-three comments were, uh, re- received as, uh, acceptable. Our responses were acceptable. I think that's a better phraseology than completeness, because completeness talks about an EIS, uh, rather, and this is really a part three. So are the responses complete? That's, I think, the goal, and that's what your consultants and your board will, will make a determination of. In reviewing the AKRF memo, their recommendations on page sixteen, I, I'd like the opportunity, we, we have prepared, uh, uh, further explanation on the three areas that they called out. Stormwater pollution protection plan, uh, leaf on, leaf off, and traffic. And since traffic, uh, received the most, uh, comments from AKRF, I'd like Mr. Canning to be able to address the board for a few minutes, and then, uh, Mr. Robbins and Mr. Warner could, uh, weigh in, having heard what we have to present, if that's acceptable.
Chris and Aaron, make sense? What do you wanna, do you, you have any introductory remarks you wanna make?
Um, I actually did have some, uh, introductory remarks, if it would be helpful. I think.
So Dan, let's do, let's do that. Let's say, let's stay up here, and then we can get down to specifics. So let's, let's stay at the top first. Oh, Chris, you wanna say something too?
Oh, yeah, quickly, Cheryl, I think, um, we have, um, Alex Ald from our team on, from, uh, who, who's a, our traffic consultant, who, who works on our traffic, um, department. If you could, uh, have him join us, that would be great.
Sure, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Uh, Aaron, on behalf of daycare, why don't you just give your high-level remarks about what you observed, the process you went through, which is part of the memo you sent around. Then we'll turn it over to Dan, and Dan can give any later remarks, then we can go down to specifics, okay?
I think that's good, cause it does tie into the traffic discussion, which I think is important tonight. Um, so let me, uh, see here. One second. Yeah, so if you recall from the last meeting, September sixteenth, AKRF and Ron Gainer, we provided a joint memo with comments, substantive comments on the September third, our three EAF. Um, we also kind of had a separate summary of what we thought were the most critical comments that needed to be addressed, um, to make, to, to understand the determination of significance better. Then on October seventh, the applicant provided their annotated response to comments document, um, which was helpful in that it guided us through each comment and what they changed. Um, it included their responses to each of the comments, along with their proposed revisions to the part three, um, and their technical reports. Um, so then AKRF and Ron reviewed all those responses, and yesterday we issued the memo that Dan referenced. Um, is a joint memo that outlined our assessment of those responses. Um, as, as you'll see from that memo, the majority of the technical comments we had were addressed. Um, I wanted to highlight a few pieces of new information that I think is helpful to the board, just so they're aware that, um, it could be useful for their review of this when we get there. Um, there was some additional details provided on how the project complies with the scenic protection overlay district. Um, they updated their visual assessment, um, to document what elements of the project could be visible under a leaf off condition from Route nine, um, while also accounting for the proposed landscaping that they're gonna do along the edge of the property in compliance with the SPO. Um, they also provided details of plantings that are part of their landscape plan to, that are going to enhance that buffer. So from that assessment, i- it's clear that, you know, in our eyes, the visibility is, is pretty limited, um, from Route nine. It's gonna be, there's already screening there. It's gonna be enhanced. Um, the primary view, viewer of, of the site in the public realm, uh, which is a SECRE requirement for visual is Route nine traffic, which is, you know, driving, um, you know, fifty-five miles an hour past the site, right? So, uh, I think what they've presented is, they did a, did a, a nice job with, um, you know, showing the buildings, uh, on the site with leaf on and leaf off conditions. So I encourage you to review that, cause it's new information that was provided and pretty thorough. Their noise study, uh, now has clarification in it, um, in that the model that they did for the amplified noise from the tent, um, has a design consideration um, that could be put in place by the applicant as part of the project to make sure the noise levels are at the property line or meeting the code. Um, particularly receptor three, which was what they identified as the most sensitive spot. Um, so specifically what they modeled in their study was an eight-foot, uh, tall barrier situated behind the last row of seats in the tent, um, which they've shown would provide enough attenuation to keep the levels at the property lines acceptable. Um, so also, Chris had a bunch of comments, um, on vegetation, wildlife, wetlands that we felt have been addressed. Um, so that's a quick summary of some new info. The outstanding issues that appear to remain, um, as Dan mentioned, stormwater sizing, which Ron can get into. He had, that's his comment. Um, and traffic, which I think is, I think the bulk of the conversation that we need to have tonight. Um, we have Alex Ald on from AKRF. He helped facilitate that discussion. Um, since the last meeting that we've, uh, since the last meeting, we've been in discussions with the applicant's consultant, John Canning, and also with DOT, um, about the reporting of the results in the traffic study. Um, and we've received some feedback just this week from DOT about that, uh, which Alex can elaborate on. Basically, um, as noted in the memo from yesterday, our review of that methodology that's preferred by DOT may potentially identify new impacts in the study area that were not previously disclosed. Um, and just a reminder that DOT, you know, is an involved agency here, so, um, because of the permits that the applicant has to secure with them. So it's not uncommon that they review these traffic studies anyway, as part of that first stage of the review of the permit. So they would have noticed this probably in that review. So we thought it was, um, in the best interest of the town to just reach out to them at this stage, um, just to get that dialogue going, to make sure that what we had in that study was acceptable or not. It turns out there could be possible issue. Well, we can talk about it more. So the other thing with traffic was the vehicle occupancy rate, which I know the chairman has been bringing up a lot. The one point seven versus two point one. Um, so I think the applicant, I hope they are, uh, tonight is prepared to share how they developed that two point one. Um, and then we can open up the discussion further on that. So that was my overview. Um, and Alex is on now. It's great, so. Guess I'll hand it over to the applicant then.
Thank you, Aaron, and, um, may I proceed a little bit, Mr. Chairman? You're, you're muted. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I was, go ahead.
Mr. Canning is Irish, and therefore we always speak of the luck of the Irish. I'm F-Irish. And, uh, given that predisposition towards luck, he has some information that Aaron and Chris don't even know, and Alex don't know about with regard to traffic, which is very, uh, helpful, and I think everyone will be. Which is very helpful, and I think everyone will be pleased by what John is about to tell you. On the methodology, on a lot of other things that were left open. So John, take it away, if you would.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Sorry, turn all, all of my equipment on. Good evening. Yes, we did receive an email today from New York State DOT from Cassandra Bibbo, who has been reviewing the application. In summary, Ms. Bibbo said, what's happening in the AM? How much traffic will there be? We don't think how much there's going to be much, but just let us know. There'd be virtually no traffic in the morning. There'd be no events, banquets, performances, probably no restaurant, and no golf. So it'd probably be quieter in the morning. She also said, which is good news, I think, that the signal meets the warrants. So it looks like if this project goes forward, we'd be able to signalize that intersection at Route nine and Snake Hill Road and Traverse Corners Road. She also said that the left turn lane on Route nine northbound into the site driveway. Also meet warrants, so we'd be able to incorporate that into the project as we have proposed. And she made a mention that the truck turning labels are. Identification was unclear, so you know, we'll make that clear. So but basically, she signed off on the, on the project. She did ask for some morning trip generation, and I would like to thank AKRF for pointing out to me that DOT has a relatively new. Format. We discussed with, with AKRF and DOT at length, and ultimately, they decided that we should use it. Today, we ran the new analysis with the new format. And basically, the analysis is unchanged for the most part. I'll describe where the greatest impacts are. The greatest impact was really at the Snake Hill Road intersection. The analysis that we performed projected that in twenty twenty-seven on a Friday evening. It'll take two, two point seven minutes to get on to Route nine. Whereas the new analysis that the DOT uses projects that it'll take five point eight minutes, so considerably longer. We actually believe that the two point seven minutes is closer to the truth, considering that it takes about a minute now, and traffic volumes are projected to increase by five percent. Between now and twenty-seven, so twenty twenty-seven, so we don't see how that increase is going to increase delays by. Four minutes. Regardless, we're proposing to signalize the intersection, and when we signalize the intersection, the overall delay. Will be just thirty point three seconds, which is only point eight seconds more than in the traffic impact study. So I, and we'll provide this analysis to AKRF to review, but the bottom line is that's the impact that had the, the intersection that had the greatest impact. From an analysis perspective, most of the other intersections had no notable impact at all, a couple of seconds. Difference here and there, and all A, B, or C levels of service. There were two exceptions to that. The first one is at the site driveway on a Friday evening. Where the new analysis indicate, the old analysis indicated that there would be a delay of forty-eight seconds, and the new analysis indicated there'd be a delay of fifty-two seconds. So it's about four seconds more, but it is a threshold level, so fifty seconds is level of service E, and fifty point one seconds is level of service F. So going from forty-eight to fifty-two, you go from an E to an F. I will note that in our analysis, because we did not have approval from DOT to put in the northbound left turn lane, our analysis did not include the northbound left turn lane. So when we add that left turn lane in, because we were informed today by DOT that we could. It brings the level, the delays down back to the E level. So we're confident that. When AKRF has a chance to review that, they'd be satisfied that operating conditions will be acceptable at that location. And then the remaining location where there was a change that is worthy, I guess, of discussion was at the intersection of Route nine D. With Snake Hill Road. You'll recall that Bosco Bell, where Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival is now. A lot of their traffic comes up and down ninety D through this intersection, so this action is going to remove that traffic. And it will replace it with a smaller volume that might come up from the Bear Mountain Parkway, or come down from Cold Spring to go into the new location. Regardless, the analysis indicated, let me just get my notes here. The old analysis basically said, in the future conditions on a Saturday evening. When there's seven hundred and forty guests departing dual performances at Hudson Valley's Twin Theaters. Earlycomers are coming for evening twin performances. There's two hundred guests at the banquet hall, and seventy-two guests. Having dinner at the restaurant, that the average delay on Snake Hill Road would go from forty-five seconds. Per vehicle to forty-nine seconds per vehicle approaching Route nine D. And again, fifty is the, is the threshold for level of service F. The new analysis indicates that the average delay will go from forty-seven point nine seconds. To fifty-two point six seconds. So that's a four point seven second increase. That would put you over the level from level of service E to level of service F. I would point out a number of factors. First of all, the overall capacity on the approach is calculated to be a hundred and ninety vehicles, which is sixty vehicles more. Are almost, almost fifty percent more than the actual capacity on the approach. So there's more than adequate capacity. It's really just a delay issue. Secondly. This is only going to occur maybe four nights a year. When there's all of this activity at the site, so most of the time it's not going to occur. Thirdly, we have a, an event traffic park and parking management plan, and the purpose of the event traffic and parking management plan. Is to plan events and understand how they're unfolding, and if there are issues associated with operations at the site. To make sure that measures are implemented to prevent them from doing so. Such measures could include requiring banquet attendees to travel by bus on the biggest days. Limiting the use of the restaurant to Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. Guests on the busiest days, so you could make it like a private party for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival on those days. Or limiting sales at the, at the tent to five hundred guests on those days. All of these measures would be effective in reducing the delays at Snake Hill Road. So in, in summary, in that regard, it's hardly ever gonna happen. It's very minimal. And if it does happen and is a problem, that, that there's measures in place to address it. So in summary, we, we believe that the new analysis doesn't change the overall findings of the traffic study. And it won't have a significant adverse impact on trap, area traffic operating conditions. With regard to the vehicle occupancy ratios. So I did a fair amount of research on this, and I did find rates that were similar to yours, Mr. Chairman. Of, I think, one point seven and, and numbers on that order, but where I found them were for, it was Federal Highway Administration. For New York commuting vehicle occupancy, as opposed to an event. And the parking, the vehicle occupancy ratios that we used to calculate our parking demand for this facility were based on surveys. Pardon me, of a sold out event at Bosco Bell, Bosco Bell. There were five hundred and thirty attendees, I think forty-nine staff. And two hundred and eighty-five parked vehicles, and we basically took the staff out at one point five per. Staff per vehicle, subtracted that from this, the two eighty-five, and what we were left, we divided. That into the number of attendees, and we got two point one per vehicle. And that's all provided in the documentation that we provided most recently. So if you, if you. And AKRF want to peruse it in more detail, it's there. But basically, the parking demand. Or the vehicle occupancy ratio for parking was based on actual surveys of the existing Bosco Bell facility. We did actually find. The FHWA has some recommendations for vehicle occupancy ratios for events. That we had originally used, and they were two point seven nine passengers per vehicle on a Saturday, and two point five five passengers per vehicle on a weekday. And when we had this conversation back in, I'm gonna say February, or back about then. You, you brought this issue up, and we actually revised our numbers from two point seven nine and two point five five down to the two point one after we had done the additional research. So that's the, the, the parking ratio. And I'm happy to answer any questions you or AKRF or any other members the board may have.
Here, here, here's my recommendation, since as I've said a few times, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go stepwise through each chapter. I'd like to reserve the, because it's almost ten o'clock. I'd like to reserve an extensive discussion. I think, I, I personally appreciate what you said, John. I'll let board members, if they want to. But I'd like to suggest we do this in a stepwise fashion. I think having a rush conversation around a lot of what you said. Which includes approval from the state for putting in a road and turning and lights to a whole bunch of seconds you were throwing out, I think requires a. You've said it, it's interesting, it's great to hear. I think I need to see it in writing, and I think we need to all do it in a stepwise fashion. We can go through chapter by chapter. And that's the, I think that's the most appropriate way for the, those at home to follow along, as well as us to follow logically. So I'm gonna. Again, board members, if you'd like to, you can, but I'd like to reserve that to our methodical approach I'd like to take once. Aaron, Chris, and Ron all feel like we've got everything we need in the part three to have that substantive, logical, stepwise conversation.
Very happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any comments from Aaron or Chris or Ron of what John said?
Could I have Ms. McKinnon speak about the leaf on, leaf off, and then close with Mr. Watson on the stormwater?
Yes, that's fine. I mean, again, I all, I opened the floor to Aaron and Chris Iran related to John Canning's comments. Anything you wanna say, gentlemen?
Well, I think we have some new information to look at. I mean, Alex is on. I don't know if he asked, wants to chime in, but I think we'll just need to take a look at what. Came about today, and, you know, maybe at the next meeting, if it's a special meeting, we can be prepared to speak more about it then. Does that sound good, Alex?
It sounds good to me. Thanks, Aaron.
Okay, so let's go back.
Thank you, John.
My pleasure.
All right, Ms. McKinnon, it sounds like you wanna say something on something about leaf on, leaf off. It sounds ominous.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron actually covered it fairly well, and we just wanted to highlight that we have provided additional. Renderings of leaf off conditions of, for the previous use that had sectional information. We have. Shown all the plant material that is proposed, that is existing. All plant material that's proposed is at their install height that we're proposing, which is around thirteen to fourteen feet. Kind of as a nursery standard. It will obviously vary, because plants are living things. But we've tried to be accurate to their, their day one install. And I, we've used the. We've estimated where the, all the buildings are, as Aaron said, so that you can see that they're quite relatively. Enhanced with additional planting, so you do, they're not in your primary view. And I think, other than that, that, that kind of covers it for us.
I just had one comment about, Aaron mentioned the, the noise mitigation and the, our response. To, to point number seventy-two early on was, we put a point, pointed out some illustrative. Possibilities. We use the word may in that section, not shall, just as a, a point of clarity. And Glenn, do you wanna pick up the stormwater conversation? Is Glenn with Mr.?
I'm, I'm here. Trying to find my microphone, sorry. I, I don't have an awful lot to say. We, we've been working with Ron back and forth on some of the details. I think that was actually in the memo, and we're very close to wrapping it up. We're, so we're. I, like, I, I don't work personally on it. Margaret McManus has been working with Ron on that, and I think we're very close to. Making the presentation acceptable. I don't think there's any question that we can handle the stormwater. It's just a matter of the details that he wants to show, and some of the. Some of the stylist, stylist, stylistic details on the report. Now, be happy to have Ron comment on that.
Yeah, I think the. The town has always understood that a full SWIP document was not necessary or even appropriate. At the stage that the board has had in terms of the environmental review. However, we've always made it clear that it's necessary to at least demonstrate. That the intended stormwater measures that are identified on the preliminary site plans. Are adequate in size and correct in location. That will probably, that will properly satisfy the requirements. Of the applicant in terms of mitigating stormwater quantity and quality. We've been attempting to work with the con, the applicant's consultant to confirm that that information is available. We've not yet seen. The necessary level of detail. Again, we're not looking for a full SWIP document, but in terms of sizing of those stormwater practices. So I fully expect that that can be resolved. It's just not, not concluded at this point.
Okay, Dan, you had someone else who wanted to say something? That's the.
No, I think that's, that's it for our team for today. I'd like to talk about process and future meeting.
Yeah, so here's, so let me, let me do this. Board members. A lot of new things were thrown out on, not on paper, but the gist of it is that there are, there were two areas that. AKRF had suggested were needed, a little bit of slight tuning. Those points have been addressed in part by John, in part by Dan, in part by. Laney, and so I believe, let me open up to any questions board members have before I ask. I talk about the process that I'd like to suggest. Or members of any specific questions. Okay, here's the process I'm gonna suggest. I'd like to pose without, although it is in, I am imposing on you all. For the week before our regularly scheduled meeting on November eleventh, Veterans Day. I'd like to suggest that a couple of us veterans, like me and Dan, Glenn. I don't know who else in this is a veteran, get together here with the rest of you all to celebrate Veterans Day. No better way to do that on a Zoom call together. At seven thirty, and spend a good two, maybe three hours just going right through chapter by chapter. Of the part three. And in, in the format I'd suggest. The applicant, whomever is appropriate, gives a little tour, AKRF comments on what they're seeing, whether that is a, what the impact the environment is. Board members ask questions. We have a robust discussion, and we just go as far as we can go in that three hour period. That's what I'd like to do. Is that okay? Board members, comments, questions, thoughts on doing a dedicated meeting on Veterans Day? Dennis's thumbs up, Laura's a thumbs up. Heidi's a thumbs up. Neil Toman is a. So I couldn't see, there was something, that's a, it looks like a thumb I saw. It's Kim, where's, there's Kim. Kim's got double thumb. All right, she's very, very excited. Okay. All right, Ron, Steve. Ron, good? Chris, Aaron, Alex. All right, Mazel tov. We got it all. All right. So, all right, so we're gonna do that. On November seventh, Cheryl, I'd like, no, sorry, November seventh, November eleven, excuse me. Like to notice that properly. We're gonna do a good dedicated meeting, get some progress on walking through the document. So that's the key next step. And that's not, you know, I don't, we're not gonna get it done in one meeting. We're not gonna do a thousand pages in three hours, but we're gonna make some progress, put a dent in going through that. Again, I think Steve went through great detail on the overarching process. That's the next important building block to start knocking through. For us to do our determination.
Okay. Is there anything that you need in addition to our responses to the AKRF comments and what we've submitted? In part three that you would find helpful, AKRF or board?
Oh, anyone wanna speak? Go ahead, please. Meaning board advisors, AKRF.
Right. I think just being prepared to, especially those. Analyses that are, you know, graphics heavy, being prepared to walk through that, how they were done. I think it's important, like the visual, for example, you know, how that was done. You know, I, I just tried to summarize it. It's a new, it was new information, because I know it's hard for the board to, to read all this stuff. Such a short period of time, so that's all. And then, you know, including the noise study also, like, I know I mentioned. What you modeled was showing a barrier, right? And that showed no impact. So the hope is that that's something that you would consider for the project. Because that's, you know, I'm sure the board would be interested in having that as a condition.
Yeah, I don't think John makes on the call tonight. He's traveling, but we'll, we'll have an answer for you on that particular point, and. We'll follow the methodology that the chairman has set forth, and we'll be well prepared as we try to be every time out. Is, what's the uniform of the day for that of the major?
Major, I was only a captain, so, and I'm, I'm long out, so I'm just gonna wear my, this is what you got, a button down shirt. That's about it. Maybe a lapel pin from the, you know, the army when you were, when you were a veteran. Okay. So last thing I wanna say on this topic, and any more about the next meeting, we're all good, all clear. So I just want to, I want to, I want to respond to something that that we got into Q and A here. And this has been a comment I've seen in a number of venues, emails, the board has received and others. I just want to be very clear. This board, the planning board, the town of Hills on playing board is is focusing on CIGRA and site plan approval for the new, for this request by the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and move its operations to the Garrison Golf Course or what will no longer be, but currently is the Garrison Golf Course. This board is not involved in any way, shape or form in any temporary usages of the Garrison Golf Course by the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. That is an arrangement with the town board tied to the PDD that already exists. It's not, this board is not going to be, unless the town board asks the plane board for its opinion, we will not be involved in that decision. No one has asked our opinion. I don't see procedurally how we get involved in that decision. It's not our purview. The, the I always forget the exact title of Greg Warner. It's not the chief compliance officer. What's his exact title, Steve?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Thank you. Code enforcement officer, something like that. He doesn't report to this organization. It's a town board appointee. So we're not involved in that topic. I don't know, Steve, you want to add any more detail to what I said?
Or what I believe is contemplated and I really like, don't think it's appropriate to get into it too deep tonight because nothing whatsoever to do with planning boards.
Exactly. That's what I said. That's actually, actually, that's all I'm asking to comment on, Steve, is our role in that request that the.
But if I, if I could just make, I'll be very quick. If a special event permit, which I believe what we're talking about is is issued to allow activity like the Shakespeare Festival, what have you, with Garrison Golf this year or whatever it may may happen. That's a temporary permit. It has nothing to do with the permanent approvals that are being sought here. They're just completely separate items. If it is granted, it will have no impact whatsoever on this board's procedure and the grant or denial of the approvals that are being sought here. If it's denied, it'll have no, no impact on these proceedings either. So it's it's really a non-issue and not something that, you know, it's like you say, that the town board and the code enforcement officer, people ask about that, not the.
I'm not going to get involved in the back and forth with the Q and A. I hope the public who was asked that question, since Mr. Regulie was the one who typed it in and others, I hope they heard that. I hope that was clear. I hope that was absolutely definitive. Anybody else want to comment on that? I hope not, but feel free to. Okay, Cheryl has posed a question to me via personal text. Should we do the meeting on the eleventh at seven o'clock? Would you prefer to start earlier?
Sure.
Or but board members? Dennis would prefer to start earlier. Kim doesn't care.
Earlier is good.
Earlier is good. That's two. Anyone else for the earlier? Okay, earlier, earlier, fine. Cheryl, let's do seven o'clock. Everyone else, seven o'clock. Fine. Let's just notice it, please. Okay. All right, anybody, anything else? Motion to adjourn. Dennis, second, all in favor. I thank you very much. See you all on this, on the eleventh. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.